Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. I would like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we get going too deep into the agenda, I noticed we have some scouts in the audience looking very handsome in their uniforms. If you wouldn't mind, would you stand? Tell us your name, what school you go to, and what badge you're working on tonight.
Thank you.
Great. Great. Thanks for being here. Do we have any other scouts?
Oh.
Thanks for joining us tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good for you.
Awesome. Perfect. Okay. Do we have any other scouts in the audi-- okay. There's another one.
Great.
Good. Glad to have you here. Anybody else? Okay.
One just walked in the door.
Oh, here comes another scout. We love the scouts. Come on in. Since you're already standing, would you mind sharing with us your name and what school you go to and what badge you're working on tonight?
Well, that's an honest response.
I bet I could guess. Good. Well, I'm glad you're here, especially on such a beautiful evening. Thanks for joining us. I know it's not-- it's hard to come in out of that sunshine. Okay. So, our next order of business is approval of the minutes. We have minutes from a special board of directors meeting from Friday, May 12th, a regular board of directors meeting from Tuesday, May 9th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
The moved.
All in favor?
I second that.
Oh, sorry. Thanks. I'm just gonna whip this meeting right along. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thanks so much. Okay. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. And for those of you in the audience that have never been to a board meeting, the consent agenda is a whole lot of items that we consolidate into one motion to handle the business of the district. So, it's all of the things that we have to pay for and contracts and things like that. So, do I have any comments regarding the consent agenda?
And I have to recuse myself for that same accounts payable warrant voucher due to a remote interest in Microsoft stock. And in addition, due to a remote interest in Disney stock, I need to recuse myself from purchase order number 4741640065 and accounts payable warrant voucher number 76146.
Else? Motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda with those two.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order of business, we have three different special recognitions, which I love. The first one is the Evergreen Award. And we are honoring staff in our district for their exceptional work. And I'll turn this over to Superintendent Dieter.
Well, I will turn it over to Catherine. Pardon me?
Janay Gomes.
Janay Gomes. I'm sorry. Catherine Garcia Spackbo said Janay Gomes. And Janay is our Executive Director of Human Resources.
Thank you. It's such an honor to be up here this evening in order to recognize employees. The Evergreen Award is a recognition program for employees this year that's new to Evergreen. And this is our second one. They're quarterly honorings. And what occurs is there's an opportunity for staff in order to fill out forms and recognize those that are going above and beyond and for a variety of other reasons. Goes through a selection committee, and then from that selection committee comes here. And they are here tonight before you. There's three groups: classified, certificated, and then a team. So, I'm going to read a couple of things about the staff members. I'm just gonna highlight because they have been submitted with a couple of pages.[366.12][366.12](laughing) So, I'm just highlighting. If-- when I call your name, if you could come up? And I'm gonna ask you to stand up here, and then at the end, you're gonna get a picture with Superintendent Dieter and then the school board. I'm gonna start with our classified, which is Jan Wilson. Jan is at Legacy High School. A couple of the highlights in regards to what was said about Jan is she is extremely committed. She feeds the students who may come to school hungry. She's working with them one-on-one, helping to understand the math, encouraging them to ask questions, understand the science concepts, just projects in general. And in some cases, you know, just that positivity in their everyday life. And she builds trust with the students and is commendable and stays with the students long after they leave just to do, you know, your everyday work. So, it's sweet. With that, she's very compassionate and patient, and we thank you for everything that you do for us.
Also really good.
Some need more help than others, that's for sure.
Our certificated award this evening goes to Norm Sanford. Norm is a teacher at Evergreen High School. He is dedicated to developing future leaders throughout student leadership, speech, and debate, and 4H for over 45 years. That in and of itself is commendable. He does incredibly selfless things in a quiet way that people don't even know about. Organizes and collaborates service learning opportunities that includes blood drives, food drives, clothing drives, dances, Spirit Week activities, gifts for children in foster care and pep assemblies. Been inducted into the Washington Activity Coordinators Hall of Fame for exemplary service. In addition to ASB leadership, he's been the speech and debate coach and math teacher at Evergreen High School for over 20 years. Norm is the author of three instructional math programs that are used in high schools around the country. He is known within the school, throughout the district, and around the region as an expert in his field. Please join me in congratulating Norm for his work. Our final award this evening is a group, and I'm gonna do my best to say their names, although I've practiced. We have Yelena Koblenik. And I know it's not Adriana, Adriana Garcia. Both of these ladies are with our ELL department, which is our English language learners. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the both of them.
Adriana.
Is a Spanish parent liaison.
And Yelena?
Yelena is a Russian parent liaison. They dedicate themselves both in their personal and professional lives to student achievement and strengthening families. They're seen as trusted allies and partners by our parents and students. Adriana provides a direct link of communication as a trusted confidante to families and informs them of upcoming opportunities and workshops offered in our district and community. She attends events so that families can see a familiar and trusted face. Yelena also is a notary. She recently spent a Saturday morning and an afternoon at the Family Emergency Planning Workshop notarizing documents for families, giving of her time and abilities. They often spend evenings and weekends translating documents, ensuring the ability for our district to clearly communicate to our families. They work side-by-side with the outreach coordinators to ensure language is not a barrier for accessing basic needs and support services. They attend meetings with parents and supports are needed and give the supports that are needed to better serve our families. They have the trust of the families and are viewed as partners in the child's education. Please join me in congratulating them.
This is for my ELL team. I told you I will say something. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't you. And she told me not to do it. I'll do it anyway. Thank you. Thank you. I stopped at her office so many times every day. So, I'm-- she is the reason-- one of the reasons I'm here. Thank you. And to my whole entire ELL team, thank you.
Hard to see us. Cozy up. Thank you so much. Congratulations, everyone. That's awesome. Now, for one of the most highly anticipated award. It's our arts awards. And I had the opportunity along with Julie and Rob, and then, of course, John was there to the district art show. Awesome. Every year, I'm just stunned at the ability of our students. They're just so creative and artistic, and I'm always stunned by what they do. So, Don Nelson?
Thank you.
Turn it over to you.
Very good. So, I would like to have all of our-- I think we have four award winners with us tonight, and I would like you to go over and get your piece of art and come forward, please. And while they're doing that, I'd like to also introduce Karen Rivera, who is our art discovery coordinator. And she's a person that you may not see-- may not be as visible as the amount of work that she's actually doing behind the scenes. She is really responsible for a lot that goes on in our elementary schools with our art discovery program and just does an amazing job for us. And so, she came here to help us tonight. So, we did open our district art show on Monday, May 15th, over at the Cascade Park Library. If you haven't had a chance to see the show, please do go into the library and peruse the show. One of our teachers, I think, one time calculated that throughout the district, our students create maybe 60,000 pieces of art. And of those 60,000, this is representative of about the top 300 out of 60,000 pieces of art. So, there's some really nice stuff in the show. So, I would like to present the people that are here tonight with their art. And first of all, let's start with our Sharon Springer Award, which is Uma Solomon from Orchard's Elementary School. So, Uma, you can show it to the audience, but would you come over here and show our Board of Directors these people that are sitting right here?
Hey. Walk right down that way. Hold it up your art. Here, I'll walk with you. Come with me.
Yeah, 'cause Dad needs to take pictures.
She wants to show the audience.
That is really pretty.
I like those colors.
Don't run away too fast. We like to look at what you have there.
That's beautiful.
Excellent. You did a good job.
Beautiful. I did get some phone calls from some of our award winners that had-- there are quite a few activities going on in the district tonight. And so, we had a few that weren't able to be here. So, we're gonna skip down to Elizabeth Griffin, who is our middle school winner. And I would like to say, for those of you that were here last year, Elizabeth Griffin was our middle school winner as a seventh grader last year. And the judges, not knowing, of course, who created the art, they're just judging the artwork, chose Elizabeth's piece again this year as an eighth grader as our middle school superintendent winner. So, Elizabeth, would you bring your piece up and present that to the board?
On any side.
Last year's hanging right out there. I got to give it to her. Thank you, Elizabeth. Next, we're gonna go to high school. And in the 2D category, Allison Wilks from Mountain View High School was our superintendent winner.
How long did that take you?
That part of the assignment to do?
Beautiful. And finally, in the photography division, Kevin Jones from Heritage High School, superintendent award winner.
Color scheme you chose.
So, I'll leave the pieces on display. And break time comes, if you'd like to peruse this segment of the art show, you can certainly take a look. And once again, I'd say that I'd like to encourage you to attend the show. We take it down after the Memorial Holiday, but it'll be up all weekend.
It's always one of my favorite events that we have because it's exciting to see the work.
It hurt that evening because I was able to kind of cruise through. The library was about ready to close, I think, when Rob and I finally got in there. But we were able to get around. Amazing that--
I had to come back a few days later and look at it all again. I was just stunned this year by the quality of all the photography in the show this time, to the point where I just kind of exclaimed, "How did they do this? Was this teaching or talent?" And somebody said, "It was teaching." And it's good to know that we have that kind of art teacher to present and the right tools that the teacher uses to present and enable, the kind of art that you can make in photography. It was-- that was the thing that stood out to me the most among just a showcase of high talent in the arts.
Well, we do know that the teachers are talented, too, because they designed the piece of art that they gave to Superintendent Dieter, which was absolutely beautiful. It was the glass-- was it glass?
Yes.
In the doorway?
Yes.
It was absolutely beautiful.
Yeah, it was nice. We're lucky. We have exceptional years and programs for the arts, and we know it's critical for academic success for our students. It's just an integral piece of that puzzle that we need to have our kids forward into life. So, very-- what we see. Thank you very much for participating. Up the good work, for sure. So, our final recognition tonight is to celebrate our Evergreen Early Learning Partners.
Kaylin Mills.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, especially for your commitment to early learning. I'm very proud to be part of our district that allows us to focus on the needs and the learning of our youngest students in the community. So, we have so many exciting strategies, but this has been one of our strongest and most important. And I stand here in my seventh year with you to recognize some of those individuals who not only participated in our professional development series, but demonstrated a commitment beyond that to supporting children and families in the transition into school. This year, our series focused on the needs of the children in our community. We review data together. We collaboratively set the direction of our school readiness and child development topics. So, predictably, we looked at things like early numeracy skills, those early math gaps that show up in children as young as two and three that we've identified. We also did some work around ACEs and trauma, what that means around children's social, emotional learning. So, it's been a great series. We had about 175 participants who represented childcare from family businesses, centers, preschools, and our teen parent programs in four different high schools. And among these folks, we have 22 who are-- we're going to formally recognize and celebrate as early learning partners. So, many of them, you will find, are out and about tonight with their children in their activities, including some of the preschools and centers who have events with families. But we do have some-- I'll read all of their names because they are all important partners. And so, when you hear your name, will you come up? And Scott has your certificate for you. Becca's Daycare. Circle of Friends Christian Preschool, who I want to point out is a seventh-year partner with us. Cornerstone Christian Early Education. Debbie's 24-Hour Daycare and Preschool. Deanna's Daycare. Kathy's Kids. KidsSpace Child Enrichment Center. Learning Avenue's Child Care Centers. Little Acorn Preschool and Kindergarten. Little Lights Learning Center. Noah's Ark Preschool. Orchard's Children's Village. Parkside Christian Preschool and Daycare. Pauline's Daycare and Preschool. Pauline is, again, a seven-year partner with us. She started in the very beginning when there were just 11 of us sitting in the room. Phyllis Burton Daycare. Salmon Creek Christian Preschool and Daycare. Small Wonders, Inc., again, another seven-year partner with us. St. Andrew Christian Preschool and Kindergarten, a seven-year partner with us. Southwest Washington Child Care Consortium. Thank you, Beth. And SWIC is also a partner since our very beginning. Tony's Tots. And Helene is a seven-year partner and began with us in that first conversation about what will we do if we collaborate and work together to build a village for children. Tina's Tender Care. And We Care Daycare out on 28th Street. So, thank you so much.
You, I'm just amazed at-- I'm just amazed at how the program has grown because I remember that first year, and I just thought, "That was a good number." And you've really grown that program. You've done such a great job, and it's so important that our kids start as early as possible to be ready for school. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. And any third Thursday evening at Cascade and the Commons, October through May, we would welcome you to come. We averaged 75 to 90 each evening for this. And these folks are eager to see the children who've been in their care succeed, not only in school, but beyond. So, it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job.
Next on our agenda are proposals for action. These are policies that are up for a second reading. We have had discussion about these policies in board workshop, then they've been moved forward to the board for a first reading, and tonight is the second reading and a vote on whether or not to approve or rescind or whatever the action item is for these. The first one is Policy 5321. It's sick emergency leave and benefits for non-union members. Where it is recommended to be rescinded.
And as I normally say, I haven't had anybody call me and say they wanted to review it or do have any other questions about it. It's a policy that's being recommended for-- to rescinds because it's incorporated in other policy statements, and it's just a overlap and duplication of policies. And we're trying to clean up all of our policy books so they make more sense to people. So, my recommendation is we vote to rescind it tonight.
Do we have any comments or questions by the board? Do we have any comments or questions by the audience? I'll entertain a motion. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is Policy 5340, District in Service for Certificated Staff.
And once again, we're recommending that this also be rescinded in that it is already included in Policy 5520, Staff Development, and it's a duplication. And as we try to clean everything up, this policy was adopted in 1974, so I think it's probably seen its best days, and we can be up to speed with the 5520 that you have already adopted. So, my recommendation is, again, we rescind this tonight.
Any questions or comments by the board? Questions or comments by the audience? Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is Policy 6440, General Leaves of Absences.
Again, we're-- Again, we're recommending that this policy be rescinded because it's been included in an updated Policy 5403 on emergency and discretionary leaves and 5404 on family, maternity, and military caregiver leave, also in collective bargaining agreements. So again, it's a duplication and right now, it's just not a necessary policy statement to confuse people with. So I'm recommending that we rescind it also.
Any questions or comments by the board? How about by the audience? I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have 6442, Personal Leave.
Again, we're recommending that we rescind this policy in that the personal leave article is included in all of our collective bargaining agreements, and this policy was not in line with that because of how long ago it was adopted. So it needs to be rescinded because the collective bargaining agreements obviously take precedence over any policy statement.
Comments? By the audience? Okay, I'll entertain that motion.
I second the motion to rescind the policy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Last but not least, we have Policy 6445, Educational Leave.
This is a recommendation for rescinding it also. We do not have a educational leave policy any longer, and we do have included in here in Policy 5403, in the emergency and discretionary leaves, the language that covers what we need here. So it's no longer necessary for us to have in the policy book, and I'm recommending that we rescind it tonight.
Questions? Comments? Audience? Hey, I'll take them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Just for the audience that isn't usually here, Michael loves to rescind policies, so we always let him have the honor of making the motion. It makes him happy. Okay, moving on to policy development. These are policies that the board has workshopped and now are bringing forward to the board for a first reading. And then at our next board meeting, we will come back for approvals. The first is Policy 6100, Revenues from Local, State, and Federal Sources.
And this is an updating of a policy we've had on the books for a number of years, and it is to get us in compliance with the RCWs and the WACS that deal with state funding. It discusses how revenues from discretionary local taxes can be used, revenues from state sources can be used, that we agree to comply with Title I requirements pertaining to the implementation of internal controls over the Title I federal funds. And it grants the authority to staff to participate in the development of any state or federal regulations deemed to be necessary for implementation of this policy. Those are the major changes. We did workshop this on May 9th. We're having a first reading tonight. I haven't had questions since May 9th, but if there are things that you need us to follow up on, we'd be happy to do that.
Have anything tonight? Up is Policy 6102, District Fundraising Activities.
Again, this is a policy that we've had on the books. We are changing the number of because we've been looking at all of our policies through the Washington School Boards Association numbering policy. This used to be 7270. It's now 6102 in that the WASDA has collapsed the policy manual from nine chapters to six. So this is a renumbering and very little change, other than the renumbering, except to add and changing Parent Teacher Student Association to Parent Teacher Organizations and adding or the associated student body. And this covers our fundraising process and gets us in compliance with the RCWs in the state of Washington with student body funds and with fundraising.
This is how we're handling things now anyway.
Yes.
Not a change in what we're already currently doing.
No.
Comments?
Yeah, so this is, just to verify again, so this is general district fundraising. It doesn't cover the foundation?
Does not cover the foundation, does not cover booster clubs. It covers district activities that are sanctioned by the district at a school or at a district level.
Private organizations.
Yes. With their own constitutions and old boards and own rules for how they do business.
Seen an Attorney General's opinion cited in a policy before. Was that discussed at the workshop?
No, it was not.
Curious about what that opinion is.
We'll find out and get to you. We'll still get to you, okay?
That one forward. Next up is Policy 6114, Gifts or Donations.
Yes, and again, this is a policy we've had for a number of years, but we are renumbering it from 7260 to 6114 to be in line with the Washington School Directors Association numbering system. It talks basically about when we receive gifts or donations. And it really outlines what can be accepted by a school, what can be accepted by permission of the school board. And the school board has to accept anything that would be like real property and those kind of things, or something that would be extremely expensive and valuable. The board will not authorize acceptance of gifts that are inappropriate, which carry with them unsuitable conditions, or which obligate the district to future expenditures from the general fund, or which are out of proportion to the value of the gift. All gifts will become district property and will be accepted without obligation relative to use and/or disposal. And I think that's really critical. The superintendent will establish criteria, and we have done that. Unsolicited gifts or donations to the district, again, is, the biggest part of this one is you can't accept, we can't accept a gift from a booster club or the foundation or others that would favor one gender over another. I'll give you a great example. At one time, the boosters club built a baseball dugout for the baseball team. We can't take that gift unless they're willing to build a dugout for the softball team because we start to get out of whack with equity around programs. And it's important that we pay attention to that because we are always being watched and it's important that both genders and those kind of things have equal access to whatever the gift is.
And that's a federal law.
Yes, that's definitely a federal law, Title IX. So those are the major changes. And so again, I haven't had questions, but I'd certainly be happy to review it or dig into more if you have questions.
Dawn, would that apply from school to school as well?
Yes.
Would we be gift to one school that would unbalance the equity picture between that school and other schools in the district?
Exactly. Because again, we have to be in compliance with the Title IX laws, and we believe that every school, as much as we possibly can, depending on when they were built, you know, you can't rebuild a new school every day. But when we're adding things that, I'll give you the scoreboards as an example, that were donated for the baseball fields. There were one donated for all the baseball fields and softball fields, and that we could accept that gift and take advantage of it because it was equitably spread across the system and it met both the boys' and girls' programs.
Up at the same time.
And they all went up within a very short period of time of each other. So that's the kind of thing we're talking about.
I think my question centered more around whether a school with a wealthier demographic could differentiate itself in an equity and access kind of way under this policy. Full resources that another school and...
And that happens all the time, and there's really nothing we can do about that unless the gift gets to be too large and it creates an inequitable situation between boys and girls in Title IX.
I'll bring this one.
Yeah, these will all come back as second readings then, okay? And I'll get you that Attorney General case.
Next on the agenda is instructional materials adoption. We have quite a list. We've been busy with new instructional materials and...
I would like Becky Kater must to walk us through that, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Now, can you hear me? There we go. All right. So we have been busy in our curriculum department, going through pilot process and determining materials to bring forward to the board for approval or for adoption. The first one is an AP Psychology course. It is a digital product, and it is in line with the AP Board, National Board, and the AP teachers have gone through and selected the Myers Psychology for AP digital resource. It is also a hard text copy too, but the digital resource is what we're really looking for with our one-to-one initiative. AP Human Geography is also being recommended by our AP team, and it is a digital and a hard copy. It meets the needs of the AP Board and the changes that they have made in their process at a national level. Spanish is one, two, and three, so first year, second year, third year. This is a, they've looked at a couple of different products. This is the one that best aligned with our district philosophy and also met the needs of communication, speaking, listening, writing, and reading in a second language. French, one, two, and three, is very similar to the Spanish component. It hits the need for us to make some shifts from kind of the old-school version of how we teach language to the new version, which we are now finding has a higher impact on our students. K8 Writing is our Lucy Culkin's units of study. They are actually the only hard copy that we have for you that we are looking to adopt. And they are kind of unique because they've been in the district for many years at differing levels within the buildings. And now we have just moved forward with a recommendation to adopt K8. And it will be nice because we'll have a K8 continuum using the same language, and students will see the connection from grade level to grade level and from building to building, which is really super. K5 Math is our homegrown math program. We're really proud of. Our teachers have actually worked to curate the materials through open resources, and then we are moving it into a platform that will be a student-facing opportunity within our K5 system. STEM Scopes is, oops, sorry, illustrative. K8 or 68 Math is also an adoption, so we will have new math curriculum hopefully from K through eight for next year. Illustrative Math is an open-up resource, which means it is a free resource. We are moving it into a couple of different platforms here in the district. One is Classroom, the other one is OneNote, so there'll be two different ways that teachers can access this material. And it is a constructivist focus, so we're moving away from the kind of drill and kill and getting kids to be talking and thinking about math. And STEM Scopes is our last one, which is also digital, and that is a K8 resource.
Becky, I think, I fell asleep. I'm not sure you covered the ABC, CLEO, US history.
Oh, thank you. I missed the very first one. So that one is the High School Social Studies. It is ABC, CLEO. It is a database of all sorts of curated materials for social studies, so, in the high school area. Did I miss it here too? Oh, it's highlighted. There you go. So World History, US History, and CWI, Contemporary World Issues. And that's also a digital platform. Folks have been using them in all of our high schools, and they're really excited about the materials. Questions? We've been chatting about these for a while. Yes, it is. It's a positive move in many ways. We have many curricular areas where we have not adopted for 10-plus years, and so folks are really excited to get some... Yes. Yes. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was pretty excited when we talked about this at the workshop because it seems like with the, well, almost all of these are digital resources. It seemed like with the costs that you were able to provide us, that the cost per student is actually way lower than what we've done or had in the past. Plus, it's a lot more flexible, be easier to update the information, right?
Correct. So normally with a curricular adoption, you will be looking at a considerable amount for a hard copy textbook. We are down into very small numbers per student because of the digital resource. It also allows us to be more flexible in our student needs. If one of these materials, we find something else better out there, we are not trapped with that resource for seven years. We get to hold on to it, or we can go ahead and iterate or make that change on the spot. Much more, you know, representative of what we're trying to do, personalized.
I really enjoyed the high school history because I felt like there were so many resources like right there. I didn't have to go any further to find anything else, and I could keep expanding that knowledge. What we've been talking about over and over is that you're, it's like, and you've got all these different layers that you can keep peeling to get to what you want to learn. So I really liked that one. I did, and one of my biggest concerns was is there the teachers, so I looked at from the teacher's side and a lot of them, and then from the student's side, because I wanted to make sure the teachers had enough tools and enough plans, and there was a lot of information in there for them. And on the student's side, it's, because my other concern was, is there enough to get like a whole year's worth of work? And there definitely is. So I did look at that. The one thing I couldn't figure out, and it's probably just me, was I was trying to like answer the math problems, like figure out, like if I was like, not that I couldn't answer them.
I didn't go that far. I'm impressed you were going that far.
Yeah, I was trying to answer them, but I couldn't, I don't know if it was because I didn't have the assignment assigned to me, or I wasn't getting like instant feedback or something, but I couldn't figure out how to electronically do that.
So we push the lessons actually out to the students, and then they get their own copy, and then they answer it, and then it shows up in the teacher's notebook.
Okay, that's what I had a feeling when I wasn't able to like click on it and like actually do the work. But then I imagined that the teacher would have to push it out to me. And then...
Or there could be an excuse.
Of not having to do it, you just can't do it. So as soon as I, and that's a good point though, so as soon as I do a problem in the digital math, my teacher will have instant feedback, and I can get instant feedback on whether or not I'm doing the problem correct or not.
Correct. Your teacher can see what you're doing.
Very important.
It's also nice because they can go back and change if I give feedback and it's, my student sees that it's wrong, or they need to make some adjustments, the student can go back in and make some adjustments and then send it back. So it's a nice two-way street.
I really like the idea of having the resources online. I did hear a concern from a teacher who felt stuck between having all of the resources online for her curriculum, which was prepared this year for her, and not having the Chromebooks. And so I'm really hoping that things will proceed apace and we won't have another device problem.
Me too.
But are there ways to accommodate teachers if we do?
Yes. So I'm going to use illustrative math as an example. That is the perfect example of what we've done this year. We have, we are already prepping to be sure that we're ready to roll in the fall, so we are going to be ordering some workbooks for students in K and 68, so that if the devices aren't in their rooms to start out the year, the teachers have a paper copy that they will be able to work with. Yeah. And the same is, I mean, EPS math would work that way, and so will STEM Scopes, and yeah.
Really proud of the teachers in the district for growing our own K5 math curriculum.
So am I. It's amazing. It's amazing. We have folks from all over the, actually all over the world, because it is out there in, on the web that are accessing it.
What I love about this is having been on the board for as long as I have, the, you know, I've been through lots of textbook adoptions, and the money that we're saving, like Todd mentioned, is really impressive. And we, I don't think we've ever had an adoption with this many categories. And, because we could never afford to do that.
No.
So, for me, this is, you know, pairing what's best for our kids, giving them the widest array of, of access to information, and is responsible to the taxpayers for good use of our resources. So, I just am really pleased that we've been able to finally get here, because it's been, you know, a little while in coming, but it's worth, it's been worth the wait to get it done correctly.
Definitely.
Thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thanks to the team.
Toria, you were probably part of that last science curriculum.
I was.
Adoption.
Psychology 12 years ago and, yeah.
Oh, yeah. But not that it will ever take the place in my heart for AP Art History. That was my favorite textbook of all time.
Anything else?
And sciences, especially in psychology, have changed so much since that last adoption that it's become critical to get that into the hands of kids.
Definitely. Thank you.
So, next time, June 20th, we'll bring these back as a second reading for adoption so that we can move them forward and purchase the materials over the summer. So, if you have questions between now and then that you need some more additional information on, please give me a call. I know you've all taken parts of this and read it, so everybody on the board, all of them had been covered by somebody on the board. But if you have questions, please call and we'll get you answers.
So, next up is our Good News Report, and I'm sure Mrs. Bowler has lots of fun things for us to chat about.
It is that time of the year where the Good News Report is, yes, and all good, all good. So, I'll, I'll jump right in. Starting with Illahi Elementary School, the fifth-grade Excel students attended a competitive math tournament at Mount Hood College, Mount Hood Community College last month. The teams placed first and second, and then there were also individual placements for second and third. So, again, the, the Excel program from Illahi. And then congratulations to Fisher's Landing and Harmony. They are two 2006 Washington Achievement Award winners. Fisher's Landing was recognized in two categories for high progress and their work with English Language Acquisition, and Harmony was recognized for closing the achievement gap. And then congratulations to the Heritage High School DECA students who participated in the International DECA Conference. The team placed 15th out of 200 competitors. Mountain View Heritage and Union had several students competing at the State Future Business Leaders of America Conference held in Spokane. FBLA students, the, our FBLA students were among 2,000 students competing at this event. A number of students placed in various competitions, and those placing in the top four in each category will be going on to Nationals in June. And then Union's own Ashley Lynn campaigned and earned the title of Southwest Washington, or Southwest Region Vice President, and so she will be serving on the state FBLA leadership team in next school year. I hope on this, on the third page of the Good News Report, kind of in the middle on the left, you recognize several of the smiling folks who claimed our 2017 Energy Star Partner of the Year Sustained Excellence Award. This is, the sixth time we've been awarded the Sustained Excellence Award, and we've been an Energy Star Partner since 2009. And you recognize Dr. Stich and Julie accepting that award just last month. Covington Middle School had three seventh-grade students recently honored by the Greater Clark County Rotary for their writing skills in the four-way test contest. In the first place winner was Rachel Tasmali, and finalists were Ashley Adams and Catherine Conley. Congratulations go out to the Mountain View High School Girls Golf Team. They were named an Academic State Champion by the Washington Interscholastic Activities Association. The varsity team earned this honor by having a collective 3.918 GPA grade point. And you'll see the team pictured there. A number of Evergreen Public School students were recently selected as 2017 Vancouver Academic Achievement Award winners, sponsored by Washington State University, Vancouver, and they've been awarded scholarships over the next year as they attend Washington State, Vancouver. They also have two National Merit Scholarship winners, Annie Liu from Mountain View and Jamie Ding from Union. They will both receive $2,500 scholarships. And not that, you know, scholarship money is scholarship money. All of us know who have students that have gone to college, but you have to be especially proud of Valeria Rodriguez, who was awarded the 2017 Kaiser Permanente Healthcare Scholarship in the amount of $10,000. Last month, one of our middle school science teachers, Joe Boken at Y East, took 12 teams of seventh-grade students, that alone is worth a mention, to attend the Mathematics Engineering Science Achievement or Mesa Challenge at Washington State University. The program there is intended to encourage minorities and female students to consider careers in science and technology, and Y East did have the largest group of students represented in that event. Two of our key club groups from Hila and Mountain View, along with volunteers from Cascade Park Kiwanis, held a baby food drive. Volunteers were able to collect more than 732 pounds of baby food for the Clark County Food Bank, and also 115 pounds of diapers for the Salvation Army. And congratulations to some of our staff members who were recently awarded the Greater St. Helensley Commendation Awards for their outstanding contribution to student athletes for their work. Michelle Guernsey, our Community Relations Secretary, Doreen Lane from Transportation, and Carrie Smith from Union ABM were honored at this luncheon. And then once again, I have to say, I am proud of the Community Relations Team, who won seven media and communications awards from the Washington State School PR Association of different categories. So, that's the third year in a, in a row that we've been one of the biggest winners in school districts over 10,000 students. And then again, congratulations to the Evergreen Transportation Department, 100% efficiency rating from the Washington State Superintendent of Public Instruction, so I can keep that fact in our community tours as we fund for the community tours onto our school buses. So, that's just a brief overview of the Good News Report. Lots of good stuff that I wasn't able to cover, so be sure and take a look.
Thank you, Gail.
Thanks, Gail.
Really, and congratulations to your team because you guys do awesome work. Thank you for that. Right. Next up, Mr. Martinio with the Budget Update. You just ran up here. You couldn't wait.
I couldn't wait, no. More good news. It's another Good News Report. The, we are through May almost at this point of the year, so we're about a week or so away from our last enrollment count. We, if you can look at, you've got two documents, the, the performance indicators where we look at the enrollment, how we did compared to what had been budgeted, staffing, how we are doing compared to what the students generate. And you can see throughout the year, there hasn't been a significant change. We'll end the year probably somewhere around 130, 140 more kids than what we had budgeted, which that is our hope every year, is that we're going to be relatively close, which means that we've got the appropriate number of staff out in the buildings doing what we need to do. And throughout the year, I've talked about the fact that things have gone well. I, I continue with that. The only thing I would say that's unfortunate is that we still are waiting for our legislators in Olympia to complete their work. It is May 23rd today, and I believe they're getting ready to start their second special session. So, we're hopeful that they will, will do their work and allow us to do our work on our end. We do continue to get what we can of the expenditure side of the budget prepared, because the very strong likelihood is that if we push up against the end of June, we're not going to have a lot of time to complete a budget by the dates that the, our board policy has, well, state law has outlined. So, we continue to work on a budget without a true idea of what the state may end up doing for us, always do good things for us. The second document you have just looks at kind of the estimate for the year where we think we're going to end. We started with the fund balance of about $28 million, and we, we will end somewhere thereabouts. Should not be a large increase or a large decrease of the fund balance. A lot of it's going to be dictated by the timing of the capital renewal work that happens over the summer, and as well as some of the technology purchases, whether they hit this year or they hit next year. But this year has really been another pretty, I'd say, good year. Standard, normal, those things are good words for me because there's no real surprises, and we keep moving ahead as we build the budget for next year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Budget, right?
Standard, normal, consistent, keep on truckin', those kinds of things.
Hey, Mike.
The bills have been paid.
The bills have been paid.
And nobody's going to jail.
Nobody's going to jail is always another, I think, a positive.
Yes.
Mike, I did have a general question. So, in the final column where it says estimated final, I guess, where it talks about like revenues and expenditures, it's about $312 million.
Correct.
If you compare that with like the far-left column, which was the original budget, the expenditures and revenues were more like $330 each.
Right. The different, why the difference? When we built the budget last year, first of all, we always have a little bit of extra expenditures built into the budget to make sure that we don't have to come back or to hopefully not have to come back and do a budget extension. But a pretty significant amount of that was, was around technology and the idea that we were going to purchase on lease the remaining devices so that as we go into next year, we would be able to move forward with a one-on-one initiative. So, we, we still are moving forward with a one-on-one initiative, but when you buy technology on lease, you expense the full amount in the year that you receive the item. So, we had built into the budget enough money so that we could show a full expenditure for, you know, really, we're talking 12,000 to 15,000 technology devices. As the year developed, there was a little bit of a hiccup with the device that we had used, and so it delayed the purchase and ultimately led to a different device than what we had intended initially. But because of the delay, the, the new device is less expensive, and more of it will be expensed next year as opposed to this year. So, that really is the main difference.
Yeah, thanks.
Kind of confused things in August when we were passing the budget, but that's what it was there for, and this year it didn't end up developing exactly that way, but we'll have that built into next year's budget again.
Thanks.
Note that it's good to be maintaining the unreserved fund balance.
Yeah.
Especially as we begin construction needs and things.
Yeah, we, we have a, a board policy that dictates a 5% reserve, and overall, we're a little bit above that, which provides us with some flexibility, and that's a good thing. Thank you.
Up we have the Superintendent's Report.
Thanks, Vic. I just wanted to remind people, we have a couple of graduations coming up. Hila is on Friday, June 9th at 5:00 at the stadium. Heritage High School is also on Friday, June 9th at 8:30 at the stadium. Evergreen High School is Saturday, June 10th at 11:00 a.m. at the stadium. Mountain View High School is Saturday, the 10th at 4:00 p.m. at the stadium. Legacy IQA is at 5:00 on Monday, June 12th, and it will be at Mountain View High School. And then Monday, the 12th, at 8:00 at the stadium will be Union High School's graduation. And then on Tuesday, June 13th, the Crestwood graduation will be held at Mountain View High School at 1:30 in the afternoon. And we'll certainly send those dates out to you again. But I just want to remind more people in the audience, we'd love to have people come to the graduations. I had an, I had a really neat experience this afternoon. I went out to Union High School with Dr. Stich and Bill Omen and Rob, and we visited with and were shown quite a bit by the First Robotics Team, who qualified, who went to Houston to, to participate and compete in the world championships, which is a pretty neat deal for these kids. But what they're doing and the learning they're, they're involved with is, is pretty, pretty far beyond what I think most of us probably ever experienced when we were in school. And the depth of knowledge of these young people is pretty phenomenal, but it's also teamwork, it's also leadership, it's also understanding in how to construct a budget and live within a budget, and it's understanding how to work together in ways that many young people have to learn later in life. So, I just want to tell you, I think it's one of the really good things that's going on, and it needs to be supported as we move forward in the future. I was going to mention the art show. Don Nielsen has already taken care of that, but the art show is phenomenal. If you don't have, if you have time to stop by Cascade Park Library and look at the art that is produced in this school district by our children, it would be a treat for you. And then I had one other thing I wanted to share. I've told you these kinds of things before, but a few years ago, Ryan Theodore Riches, who is our Social Studies and Foreign Language Coordinator, came to me and asked if we could support paying for tests for kids who were ELL students, and we didn't have the money, but they could take these tests, and if they did well on them, they would earn credit that could be applied for high school graduation. And we just got the results back. We had 251 students this year test in 20 languages. 236 of the 251 earned at least one credit. 91 earned four credits, 64 earned three credits, 69 earned two credits, and 15 earned one credit. So, altogether, there were 707 total credits earned, and each of the five high schools had 25 or more students who earned those credits. So, that's pretty phenomenal that these youngsters who don't have, or English is their first language, are able to gain high school credit by taking these tests, taking advantage of their knowledge they already have, and then being freed up within their schedule to take other courses that advance them towards their graduation. So, I just want to really congratulate the students, the ELL department, and Ryan Theodore Riches for the great work that's going on with those youngsters. So, it's good news.
Do we have any comments by the board?
Did you?
But one of, one of our librarian-
Teacher librarian.
Teacher librarian, technologies. Except for the part where he kept picking you as his favorite person.
I couldn't figure that out either.
I didn't give him enough cookies.
That's right.
I was really excited, and this is something that- And hopefully it's all that other- And hopefully it's all that other.
It was a great experience.
I'll tell you something that blew me away. Last Friday, Elaine and I, my wife Elaine and I, were at Stanford because we wanted to see our daughter Joy's spring concert because she's in the Wind Symphony at Stanford. And by coincidence, the Heritage High School Choir was on campus and they were being given a master class. And so I was able to sit in on that master class and the kids sounded awesome. But I think they also learned a lot, you know, through this master class. So it was just a complete surprise to be able to see the Heritage High School Choir down at Stanford.
It was a lucky coincidence.
Wasn't it the, was it the Heritage High School band that was down there at the same time that met Reese Witherspoon, who was visiting her old Stanford dorm room?
I saw a picture online about that.
It was all over Twitter.
I saw that part, but I didn't know if it was real or what.
I saw it on Facebook.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of Christie Brown Silva's kids got a picture with Reese Witherspoon.
That's neat.
Good news.
I think that was great that she took all those pictures with those kids that were down there and.
Yeah, that was very nice.
And apparently she surprised her old Stanford, or not her old Stanford, but in the dorm room that she used to live. The current resident got quite the surprise.
Oh, that's nice. So that sounds like that was a great trip.
Yeah, it was. I missed that part, though.
You didn't get to meet Reese Witherspoon.
That Reese Witherspoon part, yeah, I wasn't there.
Just a couple of things. Was able to attend the multicultural night at Pioneer last week. It was fantastic. All the food was donated by La Costa by the mall, which was amazing since there was probably, I don't know, 500 people there that night. It was packed in the Frontier Middle School Commons area. Some really great performances. I know that Dr. Stich was there for a few of the performances in the beginning and then I was there for the end where I saw most of the dances. But these kids were amazing. They put together the costumes, they did the dance. They had lots of participation and the staff even did a dance too at the end. And Jenny, the principal, had asked me to take pictures and so I sent them to her and forgot one of the teachers doing their Western, like a line dance. Yeah, it was really nice. And then the faith-based coffee that we have once a month, I was able to attend this last time. And it was about our foster children in our community and what we're doing as a community to take care of these kids. And just wanted to say that we have some amazing staff members who are doing some great things around foster kids. And in fact, Peggy in the back, Carlson, was able to share her story. And amazing people that are working for our district that are taking good care of kids.
Well, one of us should talk about the culture.
All of you.
All of us. How many of us were there? You and... Were you there? Us is that, I guess, Children's Culture Parade took place and it continues to astound me how well organized and how well behaved, what was it, 3,000 3rd graders can be assembled. They, as with past years, I think this was the 16th year that the city of Vancouver and the two school districts and the national parks have arranged for this celebration of heritage to take place. And the kids loved it. Got to watch Dr. Stich give a great speech and give them some great ideas about their heritage. But sadly, I'm pretty sure they loved the mayor's speech more.
They love the mayor.
I don't know. They just seem to love the mayor.
It's because he shows up in shorts.
Yeah.
He looks more fun.
Maybe that's a, maybe that's an idea for next time. Show up in shorts. But this wasn't, this wasn't necessarily connected with school board work, but I found myself at a scouting event on Saturday with Horizon Air, Alaska Airlines, who were holding their Aviation Day, and discovered that the, that the Cascadia Tech Academy was representing very well, along with the other educational institutions that teach aviation throughout the region. And left my Director Business Card with a couple of companies that didn't seem to have internships prepared for our kids and hope for those relationships as time goes on there. Oh, okay. That was followed by a wonderful hour and a half with Carl Smith, right, and his mindfulness Were we, on Monday afternoon?
Yesterday, right?
Yeah, it was yesterday, which because of the way life goes, was basically taught to me and Superintendent Dieter. But it was well, how do I put this, a really valuable investment of time and was a real hour of discovery and peace for me. And as you know, we got to talk a lot about how that, those ideas of mindfulness are being spread throughout the system, starting in those early grades at the schools with the little kids who really need to learn how to manage their emotions, especially given the demographics and the circumstances that many of them have that come into the schools. So I was really glad to finally get a chance to sample what it was. They were teaching the teachers and the children and get reports about how much benefit the kids are deriving from learning how to manage their emotions that early in life. That will grow to the whole system.
Um, let's see. I have to add, I participated on the Dave Chamberlain Scholarship Committee. And for those that don't know who David was, he was a school board member that passed away while he was in office. And this amazing scholarship fund has, was set up in his honor and memory. And so we got to review all the applicants and we had 21 applicants this year and nine to interview. And then we handed out, we'll be giving out four scholarships this year. And I'm just, I have to tell you, we could, if we had the money, we could have given a scholarship to every applicant because they were all so qualified and deserving. And it was a very difficult process, but I feel really great about the students that were selected. And I know this is going to be really helpful as they move on in their year. So that was, that was really nice. And then last night, Rob and Julie and I attended the showing of Most Likely to Succeed movie and were there to observe that. And then there were some nice questions from the audience and had some good leadership there in answering the questions. And I think it was really, it was well attended for being such a nice night. There were people there, so it was good. And so I have a little bit of something off script here a little bit.
You have a script?
I know, I do. Have a special presentation. To please come over here so everybody can.
Okay.
So we like to honor our staff who have served in our district. And we have a pin for you for 15. Just sticking around to get the pin?
I need the pin.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Bringing the geared reaction pin.
Yeah, of course I am. I got that from a kid. That was more important.
Okay. Does the board want to bring forward any future agenda items?
Something innocuous that I forgot to mention in my comments, and that is that you know that WASDA is convening the Legislative Assembly in September. And I've been making a lot of work trips this year, it seems. And it could happen that I end up on a plane to Brazil during the second day of that Legislative Assembly. So if we're discussing whether or not to go and how to represent, I could probably use some support in accomplishing that if I end up out of the country instead on those dates.
Well, you certainly will. Oh, more for sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks.
And then I just, sorry, but I wanted to make sure, well, I keep asking Bill Omen the question, how many kids of ours are not going to graduate because they didn't accomplish the graduation tests? And WASDA has once again asked for that figure because the legislature closed out its special session without addressing that problem. So we're still keeping an eye on them to see if they're going to do that. But at this point, we need to deliver another set of numbers and keep pressure on them to do something about that law if the board decides to advocate for its repeal.
Hardest number we've ever seen.
A lot of them are one or two points from passing. Some of the anecdotes that I've read about or.
Very true.
Can clearly demonstrate their ability otherwise, but just not on the test. And so it's important that we keep an eye on that issue.
Now, I am going to call the meeting into recess where we will sign documents. Then we will reconvene for a board workshop, which will have a school safety update, an instructional materials committee workshop, a facilities update, legislative updates, policies for revision, additional budget information update, and additional superintendent update. Thank you for joining us here tonight.